Call to order the plan approval authority meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board, being that it's Thursday, August 13th, well after 6:45. It's a remote meeting and in accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30a, section 20, related to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, the August 13th, 2020, public meeting of the Plan Approval Authority shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. And this meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv. I'd like a motion to recess the Plan Approval Authority meeting until after the regularly scheduled Planning Board meeting is over.
So moot.
I second that, and we're going to take a roll call vote as attendance also for the Plan Approval Authority. Peter Conroy?
Aye.
Michelle McCracken?
Aye.
Barbara Mankowski?
Aye.
And myself, Mark Knox, chairman, vote aye. So the motion carries. We're going to take a recess on the Plan Approval Authority, and we're going to go right to the Planning Board regularly scheduled meeting that it's Thursday, August 13th at 7 o'clock. This is also a remote meeting in accordance with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law 30a, section 20, related to the 2020 Nobel Coronavirus Outbreak Emergency, the August 13th, 2020, meeting of the Planning Board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakcam.tv. At this point, we have a joint meeting and a public hearing both scheduled for 7 o'clock. Our applicant that's for the public hearing has agreed to go second. So at this time, I'd take attendance for the Planning Board, and then I'd turn it over to Chairman LaCamera to open up the selectmen's portion of this meeting. Peter Conroy?
Present.
Present. Michelle McEckern?
Here.
Barbara Mankowski?
Present.
And myself, Mark Knox, present. Rich, you want to take over and open up the selectmen's portion?
Yeah, I opened up the selectmen's meeting on August 13th at 7:00 p.m. In attendance, we have Fabian. We're here.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, and Brian Day?
Aye.
Okay, we're all set, Mark.
All right, so we've got a review and vote to approve a new Planning Board member. We've received several letters of interest as well as a few resumes, and I believe we have one applicant here tonight. Mr. Klein, is that right?
Mr. Lynch.
I'm sorry, John or Jack Lynch?
Yeah, what it be like?
So I guess I'd like to open the floor to any Planning Board members that would like to ask any questions of Mr. Lynch at this point.
Mark, before we begin that, can you tell us what can, can you, for everybody else that's not here to, or that, you know, that's watching, what are the names of the candidates that are, you know, that are in place? And who could attend and who couldn't attend?
All right, so Mr. Lynch is present. We had another letter of interest and resume which was actually withdrawn from Mr. Moniz, and there was another woman named Nora Klein who has a letter of interest and a resume, but she could not attend this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So I guess I'll delve into it. Mr. Lynch, looks like you've worked quite a bit in the hotel industry. I guess I have some questions for you about land use and zoning and bylaws. Do you have any experience with any of those items?
Land use, land use, no sir, but zoning, yes, because when we were building many new properties in Denver or any of the states, I mean, I've done extensive construction projects in throughout the United States with Sheraton, and we were involved in going to different, you know, city and zoning meetings to that degree. Yes, I was involved in that. Land use, no sir.
Well, how so? Were you involved in the zoning when you developed the new property?
Well, in the zoning meetings, obviously, the size of the property is the extent of what facilities we were to provide and how we would impact on the local environment. And that, there was considerable concern by many of the residents as to the impact of a large Sheraton or even a casino when we put casinos in, as to how this would impact on the local environment and the utilities and services that would impact the residents.
So?
And how it would impact, and also how our kind of a property and our services and our facilities would impact the existing businesses in that locale.
So you had impact studies and other reports done that you would be familiarized with and?
Yes, sir. We had, we went to these meetings, we had, you know, our lawyers and our different, you know, other team members that had all that information they could present to the cities and the towns.
Okay, and forgive me, I'm not positive here, but my understanding is you're currently retired?
Yes, sir.
What kind of time would you be able to give to the Planning Board?
Whatever time you folks need. I mean, my wife recently passed, so I, I'm free. I'm here, I moved to LaBarren from Pine Hills, and I'm here to provide, and I believe I have an extensive contracting, purchasing, project development experience that could benefit the town of Lakeville. I mean, I've dealt with unions, contractors, developers, owners, suppliers, and, you know, once again, I have contracting, purchase, I have 43 years of contracting, purchasing, project management, product development, and staff management that I believe I can bring to bear on Lakeville that will be a benefit to the town. And I'm willing to put in whatever time needed. And I, as a matter of fact, when I, you know, I spoke to Craig earlier, well, and I spoke to one of the other gentlemen, that I listened to your July Planning Board meeting, and you talked about, let me just get my papers in front of me, this amending the bylaws project, which seems to be a massive project, and it seemed to me that you folks are just totally overloaded with work, and in all due respect, in that I would think, I just found it curious that, I guess the town only allows you to provide one new vacancy. It would seem like you need more than one, but I'm here to provide whatever time you folks need and might bring my expertise to help the town.
All right, very good. And so I assume, you know, at a bare minimum, the two Thursday meetings a month are no problem?
No, no.
And if there was any other research and stuff, you could help out with that?
Yes, again, I'm here, and I'm, you know, I'm now retired from Starwood, and because, because I had to take care of my wife, and now with her passing, I have plenty of time, and I'd be more than glad, I wouldn't have applied for this job.
Yeah, I understand.
I say not job, I'm sorry, but I wouldn't apply for this position if I didn't have the time and wasn't committed to doing so.
I appreciate that. And again, I'm sorry to hear about the loss of your wife, that's too bad. Do any other Planning Board members have any questions for Mr. Lynch? Peter?
Sorry, I think, no, I'm not muted, sorry, Mark. So I was the one who was speaking to Mr. Lynch earliest because I logged in a little extra early, and it was nice speaking with him. I think that he would be a great asset, especially with the amount of time that he has free. That seems to be the, that seems to be the, our Achilles heel amongst the rest of us.
Yeah, and I believe that I can provide a lot of expertise to you folks, that, I mean, not saying that you don't have it, but I can bring some, all my experience from 43 years of doing this to help you folks.
Yep.
Contracting and project management and purchasing and all of that.
Okay. Peter, do you have anything else? Or do you want to go to Barbara?
Nope. So Mr. Lynch understands that this is merely until, you know, next April, I assume, because he read the posting, and then he could run for a regular election, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Excellent, okay.
Barbara, do you have any questions for Mr. Lynch?
Hi, Mr. Lynch, Barbara Mankowski, I'm an, only been on Planning Board for probably, what, three years now, so it's, it's kind of newer to me as well. I wanted to ask you, you know, you're newer to our community, you're coming from, I think, was it, it was Plymouth, right?
Pine Hill, I gave you from.
Pine Hill, yep. So when you're, so you joined our community, you're going to be one of my neighbors, and I'm just curious, what was your motivation for choosing Planning Board as an activity to get involved with versus, you know, any other number of charitable or community service opportunities that may exist?
Well, I mean, I've done plenty of, you know, I believe I've done, you know, a number of charitable groups or, you know, during pariah writing service. I used to teach Redwood Kids over at the Minniman Elementary School. I worked with the elderly services center out of Plymouth South. You know, I've done all, I've done that, you know, and I've worked with the Plymouth School System, and I believe I've done enough contribution work and with the, work with the epilepsy foundation, and obviously work with the MS Foundation, and I think I've done that, but I want to, what I'm trying to do is, when I come here, when I saw the position, I read about the position in the paper when I first came here, and I said to myself, I mean, I've got the experience, the 40 year, two years, 43 years of experience in purchasing, contracting, project development, that I would think would be appropriate, as I read what the Planning Board does, I would think that I could take, bring that experience and benefit the town. That's all I want to do. I'm not looking for to make this a money-making job or any of that kind of stuff. I understand it's, this is, I'm free time, and I, God knows.
Don't worry, you can't make any money off this.
And I, and I listened to, like I said earlier, I listened to the July meeting, and God knows you people need some help, and I'm saying, here I am. If you want to, you know, avail yourself of my experience and my services, I'm willing to help.
All right, anything else, Barbara?
Um, no, I guess that's it for now.
Barbara, did I answer your question correctly?
There's no correct answer, thank you very much.
Thank you.
How about you, Michelle? Do you have any questions for Mr. Lynch?
Um, well, hi, nice to see you. I personally was just interested to know if you have any interest in purchasing, developing, or building in Lakeville?
No, I'm interested in staying right here at 35 Country Toll Lane. I get that's enough.
All right. Just as a point of clarification, I think her question was, do you have any commercial interests in the community?
No, ma'am, no, none at all, none at all. My only interest in is filling this position.
And just curious, not a prerequisite, but where you seem very interested, have you had a chance to look at any of the town's zoning bylaws or bylaws, or there's quite a bit of information to brush up on with, I had mentioned land use before, but there's subdivision control acts and quite a bit of state information that we need to get you if you become part of this.
I tried to find some of that. I wanted, what I wanted to look at is the amended bylaw project, and also you're, you talked about the, you were going to do a, the master plan, and I was, I was trying to see if I could get, see the master plan, but, you know, I talked to Peter earlier, and that's evidently not available. So I tried to see as much as I could on the Lakeville sites, which in all due respect wasn't an awful lot, so to answer your question, not very much, no sir. And I would like to do that, I mean, that's, what I wanted to do was get as much information to bring to this meeting so I could speak effectively to you folks, but I, you know, I haven't been able to do that. Maybe not looking at the right sites.
No, it's difficult right now, just with the way meetings are conducted, it's really not a lot of public interaction, so it's unfortunate in many ways, but it is what it is for now. Before we move on to the next resume, would any of the board of selectmen like to ask any questions?
I'm all set, thanks.
Mr. Day?
I think so far the questions have been great from planning. If we can maybe keep it short, Mr. Lynch, do you have any particular projects you're proud of in the past that proved more challenging than others that stick out to you in your career?
Sherat New York.
That was quick, that must have been a good one.
The Sherat New York was a massive project. We rebuilt the whole facility, shut it down, shut down the elevator shafts, which was a major inconvenience to the, obviously, the guests. Most importantly, though, was it not to be negative or critical, but working with the New York unions is brutal. And we had many strikes, many threats, and we had much damage to our property, not only the Sheraton, and then I also did the St. Regis. And dealing with those gentlemen was a major challenge, getting through the projects, working with the contractors, working with the unions to satisfy their needs. I mean, they blocked off 72nd Street from us. They totally demolished the third and fourth floor of the St. Regis Hotel, and I'm not bad-mouthing the unions, I'm just trying to tell you what it's like, working and doing, we remodeled the St., the, when we owned Caesar's Palace, working with that town and trying to work with all of the conflicting other hotels and casinos was a major challenge.
Very good.
Thank you for that experience.
And how about you, Ms. Fabian? Do you have any questions for Mr. Lynch?
Um, you know what, Mark, I think I'm all set. I think I'm getting a lot from everything that has already been asked, so thank you.
Thank you. So I think that's all the questions we have for Mr. Lynch. I just wanted to make mention of Ms. Klein's resume. She seems like she has a lot of experience in purchasing and personnel management, not a lot to do with construction or any land use, and unfortunately, she couldn't be here tonight. I know people always say, I only got three or four days' notice, but Thursday is the Planning Board meeting night, so I think if there's, and I think it's a work conflict, so I felt like that might be an ongoing thing, if Thursday's a work night and a Planning Board night. So I'm prepared to make a motion to recommend appointment of Jack Lynch to the Planning Board as our appointed member.
Before we, before we do that, Mark, I'd just like to add in, you know, I'd like to mention that Nora Klein, I don't know either of these individuals, Nora Klein is a resident of Lakeville, I believe she's a longtime resident of Lakeville, and she does have, she is interested in the well-being of the community. Being a working professional myself, you know, three days' notice is oftentimes a challenge when you have prior commitments that have been made, so I don't necessarily want to see that be held against her. It's really unfortunate that she couldn't be here, but it is very short notice, and that's why I just wanted to add that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, that's fine, but I think to everybody's point and with what's coming down the pipeline, I don't think that we can extend this for another meeting. I think she's certainly welcome to run for an election in April, but at this point, I think we need to act, and I think that my gut feeling is Mr. Lynch is the right person for the job. So I have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that, Mark.
So roll call, vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yep, go ahead.
This has to be a joint vote between the board of selectmen and the Planning Board, you know?
Just so I'll do a roll call of all seven members, or six members, sorry. Seven. Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Mr. LaCamera?
Aye.
Mr. Day?
Aye.
And Ms. Fabian?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Lynch, you will be appointed to the Planning Board. I believe you'll have to take a conflict of interest course, and there's probably a little bit of paperwork and stuff you'll have to sign at the town clerk's office somehow.
Thank you, thank you, everyone, appreciate it.
You're welcome, look forward to working with you.
Thank you for your confidence in me, I appreciate it.
Yep, welcome, Jack, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Lynch, before you sign off, you, Mark is right, this is Maureen Candido, Town Administrator, you need to reach out to Lillian Drain, our town clerk, and get sworn in before you can attend your first meeting.
Lillian Drain, and that's at the town hall, right?
It is.
Okay, so I just get out of the town hall and speak with her?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Lynch?
Yes, ma'am.
This is Tracy, we spoke earlier.
Oh, Tracy, how are you, love, email back and forth, nice to see, nice to see the face behind the emails.
The town hall is still closed to the public, so you need to call the town clerk and set up an appointment for you to go in and sworn in.
Okay, I'll give her a call tomorrow, I'll give Lillian Drain a call tomorrow at the town hall. All right, thank you. Thank you.
Very good, and so that concludes that. The next item on our agenda with the board of selectmen is to discuss a part-time planner option.
Mark, do you want me to leave the meeting?
You're welcome to listen in, but I'd ask you mute yourself if you want to listen in. Thank you. I'm going to defer this one right to you, Rich. We kind of spoke earlier with Serphead, and I'd like you to pick up with that and.
Okay, I don't know if the Planning Board recalls, but back at our budget meeting in March, you know, we talked about the options as far as a planner is concerned, and at that time, we kind of agreed that we were going to hire a part-time planner, and that part-time planner, we were hoping, was either going to be come from Serphead or was going to come from a consultant, so we could decide what direction we want to go in before we hire either a permanent part-timer or a permanent full-timer. So we had a call this afternoon with Serphead, Mark was on the call, you know, as well, and unfortunately, you know, this request, I believe, was done through Barbara a few months ago, and we thought they were going to be able to provide some services for us, but today they told us they can't provide any services at all. So that's kind of disappointing, because we thought we could move forward at least temporarily with some kind of support and help from them. So now, I guess, Mark, we got to discuss changing a little direction here in looking at a part-time planner, either temporary or some kind of consulting, so between us, I mean, we could put the job description together, and you could take a look at it, you guys can decide if this is what we want to do in the short term, so that's kind of where we are unfortunately.
Yeah, and I think, for at least the hospital property, if that gets developed, I think that that's something we just look at turning the cost over to the developer, and we hire some sort of an engineering consultant to work with us on that, but to your point in our early discussion, we need to come up with some very specific guidelines, and I'm speaking to the Planning Board right now, as well as that 43D committee, when we get that assembled, to exactly what the needs and requirements that we expect of this consultant to oversee for us, and presence at meetings and the likes of, it's more involvement than just the typical, you know, send to the plan to a remote office and they send a letter back two weeks later. We need some involvement from this consulting firm that we do bring in, I think, at least on the hospital property, but I agree that make a description as well, and if we get a part-time planner, super.
Mark, I'm going to, I'm going to jump in with Rich, because we had a conversation about this extensively, and one of the benefits to using, to starting out this process with using somebody who has done this type of work in the form of a consultant, is that we get a chance to see what services they're providing, have provided, to other places, other towns, and what different experiences and different types of developments other people have worked with, which, you know, prevents us, I think what it benefits the town is that we get a chance to see some diversity, because I think we don't know what we need yet. I think that's, I mean, right, Rich, that's kind of what, when we were in front of the Board of Selectmen with Zink in January, February, that was one of the benefits to starting out slow, was to try to get a sense of what exactly we need, because I don't think we, you know, we even know what a planner does and what a planner could offer us and what somebody has seen in other places, so I think it'll be interesting to see. I hope that we have at least three different companies to look at, so that we can get some idea of what the scope of services may be between different firms.
I agree, because to make a commitment upfront, you know, for a town planner could cost anywhere between $75,000 to $100,000, not that I'm against it, but I think Bob is correct, let's figure out what we need and what kind of support services we need from a person, from a position, you know, like that. So based on those comments, Mark, I don't know if you want to appoint maybe Barbara or whatever, and we can work on this to see what we can come up with as some alternatives here in the short term?
Well, I think I'd like the Planning Board to put together an extensive list of the needs that we know we need.
That's right.
Maybe we reach out, maybe at our next meeting, we appoint somebody to go a little further with this task, we call up some of the consulting firms that we've worked with and see if they offer more than just stormwater management.
That's right, too. Yep, okay.
Is Maureen still on the call? Is Maureen Candido still here?
Yep, she's here.
I am.
Maureen, when you do, is there, are there rules around bidding? Do we have to have send out for bid to three different companies or five different companies? I mean, what are the guidelines for municipality on engaging consultants?
Something like that would probably be a request for qualifications, and it would be a bid process, because this is not, you know, a small contract we'd be talking about, it would be a significant-sized contract, so there would be the procurement rules as far as that goes, and we'd have to follow that, and Tracy and I would be happy to, you know, work with the Planning Board on to, and to see where these requests fit best, and to create a scope, so we can, we can put everyone on a level footing as to what it is we need, but I am in full agreement with Mark's plan about getting the Planning Board together and really brainstorming to what it is that you want this person or these people to be able to accomplish, and I would say a lot of what you need is related to the 43D, and I believe you all have the 43D guidebooks. If not, I can send out copies to each of you for the guidebooks, so you can understand all the intricacies and all the timelines. Mr. Lynch, I'll get you one, too, of what goes in to the 43D, so you'd be able to understand that, too, from a, from a high level when it's on paper, as opposed to, you know, getting into the nitty-gritty. And then Barbara brings up a good point about using someone that has already gone through the 43D process before as being a great resource. It is a unique process for the town of Lakeville. We don't have any other properties that are under the 43D, and we have never had any in the past, so we don't have the interior historical knowledge of the things that aren't written or the things that come up in between, so all important points to discuss before we, before we involve anyone else in it, but we do have a compressed timeline, so the sooner your board can come up with that list, the better it is for all of us.
So?
Mark?
Mark, excuse me, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
Kathy to put that on our agenda for the next meeting, and I want all of the board members to work on assembling some sort And I want all of the board members to work on assembling some sort of, basically, we're looking to do a job description of what we expect from this, as in-depth as possible for every facet of development. To make sure that, and again, the, this, we keep talking about, and there's two different parts to this. There's the 43D, the hospital project, I think, much like peer review, we try to turn those costs right over to the developer on this one. But long-term, I think that if we're looking to hire or do some consulting stuff to put out to bid for the town's interests on other projects, that's a different animal. That, you know, if the town's gonna foot the bill.
I agree, Mark, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same thing, I think we got two different things here. We got a part-time planner that certainly would be involved in the project. But the part-time planner does things necessary for the Planning Board and the zoning enforcement officer and stuff like that. So that's one piece. And then the second piece is a resource for the 43D project, which would include some type of consultant that may manage the project for us. And also, um, work on the, the peer review side, which is what Mark has pointed out, is an engineering firm, whoever that may be. So we don't want to mix the two here, uh, because we can't say we're gonna hire a town planner. And then the town planner is gonna be the person that, you know, manages the project for the Lakeville Hospital. So anything associated with the Lakeville Hospital property, we would make the developer, you know, pay for that. Anything to do with a part-time planner would be the town's responsibility. So are we clear on that?
Yeah, and I'm just throwing this out there that, let's just say that we find a great consultant to work with on the hospital property. And if we can't find a planner, if we can't fill those shoes, or if we at some point have a planner and lose a planner, would it be an option to utilize that consulting firm again on larger projects? That we can still turn the cost over to a developer? Because it sounds like from what the building commissioner has said, we have a few other big projects coming down the pipeline in the next few months possibly. And they're all commercial projects, so, and I own property, I hate to say, there's money there. But the developer can foot the burden of some of that cost to protect the town.
Yes, we can, we can do that, Mark.
Yeah.
So, um, one of the things about, I think we need a little clarification. If we do put out a request or proposal for these types of, these services and qualifications, um, we can pick the firm that we want and then negotiate the price. So we don't have to take the lowest bidder on that price.
Okay. Rich, just so, for a point of clarification, um, are you thinking that the town is gonna end up? So I guess when I, when I initially was thinking of this through this process, I thought that the consultant, whether that be Serphead or whether that be an outside legal firm that does land use, executes on land use projects, that that consultant would be a resource for the town regardless of the projects that we were working on, until we determined whether or not we needed to pull that function in-house and have an actual town employee. Are we thinking of one in the same, are we looking for two different companies, one company to manage the commercial stuff and one to be a resource for us?
Well, Mark, help me out, we...
We need one right now, we need a consulting firm to help us with these big projects. And we're not gonna find a planner that quick.
Right, that's right.
Planner is step two, consulting firm is step one. And if we get a good planner that can pick up some of those things that a consulting firm used to do for us, great. But I think that if, again, if it's something that we can utilize a consulting firm, turn the cost over to the developer, and we don't need to put another person on the payroll of the town, I think that's a home run.
Absolutely, I think that's kind of what, you know, what I thought we were doing, you know, when we, our recommendation back in earlier this winter, that was the recommendation that we sort of, before we talk about hiring a planner for the town, we really explored what, what those resources look like from an outsourcing perspective.
Right, so either way, at our next meeting, Kathy, I'd like to have on the August 27th meeting agenda for all the Planning Board members to work on. And we'll develop a description of this, either consulting firm or a planner. Ultimately, we're looking for the same thing from either an individual or a firm. Obviously, the firm would probably have more resources, but that, that's what we're gonna work on. I don't want to keep going back and forth, I feel like we're gonna go in a circle on this one.
Just, just one more follow-up on that, Mark. And that's fine, um, the only thing that, one of the things that you probably need to put on your agenda as well. So that strategy's okay, but at the same time, we gotta look at engineering firms that are going to do the peer review of the hospital property too. I mean, I know you're trying to do it together. Right? We're hoping it's the same company.
Yeah, yeah, I'm hoping that we can find a company that does everything from noise mitigation for backup alarms on trucks when you have residential development near a commercial property, as well as the traffic impacts, the stormwater, the wetlands, everything all in one. One company, we want to get a description that, if we can get ninety percent of it that goes through one company, I think that's a good thing. But we have it all written down and we go through, it's not that difficult if we go through the 43D process or our regular site plan review. And we just look at all the, the things that, on our checklist, those are the things we need somebody checking on it.
Yep, okay, that's right.
Quick question for you, the chairs, for those of us not at the Serphead meeting today, was the, the lack of services just, is that something they don't provide? Or they just don't have the resources to provide right now, is there any background there?
They claimed they had no resources, they didn't have the staff to help.
Okay, thanks.
That's what I got, no, Rich?
That's what I got.
Yeah, Brian, Serphead is moving into some fairly sizable projects particularly related to the COVID-19 economic relief activities that are going on. So I think it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck thing.
Okay, alright.
They also had brought their budget to the table, that the looming other shoe to drop would be if their budget gets cut. So they weren't looking to hire people, have to lay them off immediately.
Makes sense, alright, thank you.
Alright, so the next item on the agenda is to discuss support for Lakeville Hospital project, I think we kind of just went right into that from the planner option. Would you say we covered both?
Yeah, that's fine, um, the thing about the project is that, first of all, Maureen, I would like us to finish updating the, the document. So when the Planning Board gets the document, the document is complete. So we do have all of the people that are gonna serve on that committee have now been appointed, we'll appoint the last two Monday night. So before we send it out, I'd like to have that document updated with all the correct information. So the Planning Board is not looking at a seventy-five percent completed document. So, um, that may take us a week to get done, but I, I just, if everybody says that's okay. Because we don't want, we don't want mixed documents out there with misinformation, you know, on it, okay? Is that okay with everybody, Mark?
That makes a lot of sense.
Thanks.
Do you have a timeline when you might plan the first 43D committee meeting?
That was my next thing.
Go right ahead then, sorry to cut you off.
Um, so everybody knows, um, the developer is planning to meet with the, try to meet with the, the 43D committee. And then go through the project and so forth and address issues and et cetera, et cetera. So those committee members then can bring those issues back to their appropriate boards, whether it's the Planning Board or the Board of Health or Conservation or whatever it happens to be. So, you know, everybody knows upfront, you know, some of the issues or concerns that we have, that he may have to address as far as the project is concerned. What I suggest that we try to do is that before that middle of September meeting, that the, the 43D committee meets maybe the first week in September. And we start talking about the process and so forth and how it all works, how it all works together, and who's responsible to do that. So that, that's what I'm suggesting, Mark.
Okay, so everybody that would generate those documents has all of our emails that are on that committee and they'll see something via email at some point.
And of course, any member of the Planning Board can certainly participate in any of that discussion, it's not a closed meeting. So it'll be open, so if you decide that, you know, you want to attend, and that's okay, you know, too. So, just to follow up, so he's talking about September fifteenth and then submitting the plan to the Planning Board on October first. Quite frankly, I think that's pretty aggressive, you know, on his part, but we'll see, we'll see what happens. Because once he submits that plan to the plant, to the Planning Board, then there's a six-month process that kicks in based upon these guidelines. Now, do we have to stay within six months? No, no, we do not. But uh, that's, that's the overall process as far as the guidelines are concerned. So just so you know where he is, he has completed all his environmental studies now. He has all his costs associated with the cleaning up the landfill and tearing down the buildings, which is an excessive amount of money, a very excessive amount of money. So, uh, that's one piece. So now he's having his engineering firm, he had a preliminary plan, now he's doing all the other stuff associated with the project. Okay, so he claims that he's gonna have that information available by September fifteenth. I don't think he is, but anyways, but that's the plan.
So we want to be prepared. So, I think...
So I would, Mr. Chair, if I may speak, I would recommend to the board members and for anyone listening that wants to get a head start on the educational process for 43D, to go on the mass.gov website and just type in 43D. It's a, it has all the other projects that have gone in other towns for 43D. It's got a little frequently asked questions section, it's got all sorts of things that are helpful in guiding you through the process and understanding. Sorry.
Okay, Mark.
Yep, I'm here.
Hey Mark, that was mass.gov/43D.
D, D as in David.
Great, thank you.
Sorry, Amazon. So it has helpful guides for getting you to understand what's going on and helpful frequently asked questions. It'll help give you an educational start before you even start the project.
Excellent, thank you, Maureen. So I think that concludes most of our discussion tonight, Rich, no?
I think that's it, unless the Planning Board members have any questions on the project or anything, we can try to answer, you know, as best we can.
No, I think at this point, we wait and see, and as soon as we get plans, we delve into it.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Chair, before you, we go, does Nate Darling want to contribute anything? I always am interested in when Nate talks.
Thank you, Leah, so now, just listening to what everybody said, they touched upon any, any questions that I would have, I think it's gonna be a good process. I know that Rich is very active with the developer on this and getting information and bringing it back. And I really look forward to seeing this project progress. And I see the, I look forward to the Planning Board getting a little bit of help as well. So, no, but thank you for asking, Leah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I guess we're all set, Mark, um, from the Board of Selectmen's side, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Fabian?
Second it.
Folks, before we go, I just want to say, I appreciate your confidence in me, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynch for signing up.
All those in favor?
Fabian, aye.
Day, aye.
LaCamera, aye. Okay. Thank you all, goodnight.
Goodnight, Rich, thanks.
Take care. Hey, Mark?
Yes. Mr. Lynch, you muted yourself again.
Okay, Mark, tell me what you need me to do and I'll do it.
We will, we will, we're gonna stop the rest of our meeting now though, we have to get back into our regular Planning Board meeting.
Okay, whenever you're ready, tell me what you want, I'll be glad to do it.
Alright, just sit tight and observe at this point and please be muted.
Thank you.
Thank you. So at this point... I'm gonna reopen the public hearing that's been continued on Bellaway, Thirty-Nine Cross Street and Part of Five Harding Street. We had an application of a definitive plan for a residential subdivision, uh, which we met, I think our July ninth meeting and discussed, and it's been continued twice now, tonight's meeting. Pull up a little bit of paperwork that I have prepared for that. So at the previous meeting, I allowed excessive discussion, this veered a little bit from standard meeting decorum, but it allowed the butters to speak, speak their mind. However, tonight's meeting, I will not be conducted in that fashion. I will keep control of the floor and give individuals a turn to speak, but if an individual speaks out of order, they will be warned. And if they continue to speak out of order, they'll be removed from the meeting. So I want all of the butters of this Cross Street project, which it looks like we have Mr. Morrissey present. And Mr. Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers present, is there anyone else here on the hearing for Bella's Way or Bellaway?
Attorney Michael O'Shaughnessy is with me as well.
Okay. So I just want to read into the record, "The purpose of the subdivision control law is a comprehensive statutory process designed for the safety, convenience, and welfare of the inhabitants of cities and towns." When a definitive subdivision is received by a Planning Board, they must schedule a public hearing. The Planning Board must act within forty-five days to either approve, modify and approve, or deny that subdivision plan. The Planning Board must approve a plan if it complies with the Board's rules and regulations and the recommendations of the Board of Health. If the Planning Board fails to take action, uh, the plan will automatically be constructively approved without any changes as drafted. So I just want to read in, I have a letter from the Board of Health that we have had, I just want to make sure that it's read into the record. Dear Chairman Knox, we have received copies of the definitive plan for our residential subdivision of Cross Street, known as Bellaway. The Zenith Consulting Engineers' plans dated May eleventh, twenty twenty show three new residential dwellings with onsite sewage disposal systems. We feel there is sufficient land and suitable soils to allow for three new subsurface sewage disposal systems under the Title V and Lakeville wastewater design parameters. And also have sufficient area for three new proposed wells. There is also a local Board of Health regulation for a slab above high groundwater, and all of the proposed dwellings meet the criteria. Therefore, based on the information provided to the Board of Health, there is no reason for the Board of Health to recommend denial due to public health issues at this time. Any questions, please contact Edward Cullen, our Board of Health agent. So, I just want everybody to understand that is here and present for the Bellaway hearing. We had a letter from the Fire Department also, that they initially had some concerns. And he restated a letter, his most recent letter. This letter has been written to provide an update for the Lakeville, from the Lakeville Fire Department, review of the proposed Bellaway project. As previously stated, the Fire Department has no issue with the width of the proposed roadway as it exceeds twenty-foot requirements. In previous correspondence to the Planning Board, the Fire Department required the inclusion of a cul-de-sac or an alternative turning device at the termination of laneways. Following a meeting with Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC, it has agreed that the hammerheads will serve... it has agreed that the hammerheads will serve as the turnaround device. The hammerheads will be constructed with dimensions to accommodate Lakeville's ladder truck. As previously stated, the road surface will be constructed to accommodate the weight of Fire Department apparatus. Any questions, please contact Chief Michael Bryant. There were a better concerns at the last meeting of a loss of privacy with clear cutting of trees that would expose Route 44, traffic safety, and personal loss of privacy. So to condition those items, we had requested with the developer planted no-cut buffer zone behind 35 and 37 Cross Street. And the cleared area that is currently cleared would be replanted as part of this no-cut zone. As far as the clearing cutting of trees beyond the houses to Route 44, those trees are actually protected by a conservation condition. So there would not be any cutting that was an original concern of the butters. In addition to the traffic safety concerns, I reached out to the Chief of Police and Highway Superintendent and received the following response. So my request to Chief Perkins and Franklin Moniz of the Highway Department was that the Lakeville Planning Board has a definitive subdivision plan at 39 Cross Street. On its upcoming agenda, residents on that street have concerns about truck traffic during construction of the new road. I am reaching out to see if there would be, if you would permit or allow the planning board to condition this project with the following signage or a variation of to be put up on Cross Street during roadway construction. Signage might say trucks entering or construction zone slow. And if signage is allowed, any assistance or recommendations on the exact wording and location of signs would be appreciated. I included the Highway Department so that they would be included in that matter. The chief's response, excuse me, that's Chief Perkins of the Police Department. I talked to the DPW Director Moniz, and we both agree if we were to allow or approve signage, it may put some liability on us and start type, some type of precedent. We do offer the following assist, the following to assist you in your decision process. In the interest of public safety, having signage warning traffic of hazards is helpful. However, the term "construction zone" is confusing as it carries additional speeding and enforcement penalties. Construction and construction area or construction ahead may be more appropriate. There may also be an issue with the location of signage. Will it be on private property or create some type of sightline obstruction? If the construction creates a hazard, they may need to hire a police detail. Agreement between the Town of Lakeville Police Collective Bargaining Agreement. Road detail would consist of a road opening, road construction, which would consist of Cross Street, or any situation that results in a redirection, detouring, stopping or starting of any traffic. Any situation which jeopardizes the safety of the public would require a detail officer. At no time will any company truck, any company work in the Town of Lakeville upon a public way or interfere with the normal flow of traffic to a public way without the assistance of a police officer nor shall any company impede normal lines of sight at an intersection, hills, or cross, road crossings. Then he actually acknowledged that we did have an issue on Cross Street when the subdivision at the old driving range, which was a lot of the residents' concerns of Cross Street. Residents of Cross Street complained of speeding, construction trucks, and construction workers in private vehicles. We addressed the issue by running radar and writing citations. The common offenses were speeding and trucks with uncovered loads. That's it. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to Jamie from Zenith Consulting Engineers.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Jamie Bissonnet from Zenith Consulting Engineers, for the record. If I may, I'd like to share the screen and we can go over the modifications on the plan since our last presentation.
Please do.
Thank you. All right. So this is the updated revised definitive sheet. I believe that since the last meeting, some of the things that we had, that we had taken out of the board meeting, but also from Mr. Nick Laney's comments from HML Associates, on this plan mostly dealt with easements. As you can see, easement A here is for drainage area. Easement B over in here, same thing, drainage. Easement C, drainage. Then we have an easement B here, which is a buffer, buffer zone, in which I believe the chairman spoke about plantings to buffer the lots on Cross Street. On this area on, on easement C, we have our drainage basin, but we're proposing a fence, you know, on the berm side of the basin, you know, for screenage on this section in here. If I can go to the next sheet. A couple of the items that were brought up by Mr. Laney that we evaluated. One was the outlet structure. Prior to, prior, with our original submittal, we had a four-inch pipe that was leaving the basin. His concern was that the pipe could clog because of the small diameter. So what we did was we up, upsized the pipe to a 12-inch pipe and put a control outlet structure with a four-inch orifice and an overflow catch basin top on that structure. So if the four-inch orifice on the box does clog, the water can overflow onto the top of the box structure and flow in the catch basin grate to alleviate that clog. Another point that Mr. Laney had brought up was asking us if we had done a covert analysis on the pipes going underneath the driveways. The answer was no, we had not, but we did. And we found that we actually had to add one pipe and increase the size on this section in here, and that these pipes actually were, were meeting the needs, so they were able to stay as is. And the reason being is when you do covert analysis flow on these pipes, we weren't getting enough head building up to push the water through. It was a flatter area in here, so we had to increase the surface area. And there was a question about drainage in the front here, making sure that it was all, all caught in the system or accounted for in the drainage or not going into the drainage. And we've, we have addressed that with him, and he has written us a clean bill of health letter. I believe for Mr. Laney's concerns, that addresses, that addresses them. And I'd be happy to try to answer any questions you have.
Just, I know I did a lot of talking and reading initially, but that was the one thing I overlooked was the HML Associates letter from Nick Laney. I'd just like to read that into the record as well. And this is, I think, his most updated, it's July 28th, from HML Associates, "The Review of Drainage Report for Bella Way off Cross Street." "We have reviewed the revised stormwater management report dated July 7th, 2020, and the accompanying revised subdivision plan dated July 27, 2020 for Bella Way, prepared by Zenith Consulting Engineers. The comments contained in our June 22nd, 2020 review have been addressed to our satisfaction. It is our understand, our undersigning that..."
I think they should say "understanding."
Yeah. It is our understanding that the applicant is working with the planning board for a long-term maintenance plan. Is that? I had a motion, a motion prepared, and I know Attorney O'Shaughnessy did a finding as well. And I haven't matched the two of them up that well. But that that stormwater maintenance plan be reviewed by Nick Laney as well?
Well, I, we spoke with Nick about the maintenance plan. His concern was if the owners of the development don't maintain the basin, then it could, it could cease to work, just like anything, you know, in life. If it's not properly maintained, they can be issued. And so I believe Attorney O'Shaughnessy's package that he had submitted for the Common Roadway Maintenance Agreement gave, gave explicit powers if the, if the owners of the property in charge do not maintain this and it becomes an issue, the town has the right to access the property, clean or do the maintenance and charge or fine, charge the, the people that were responsible for that. So I think that was.
I actually remember reading that, yeah.
Yeah, that, that was Nick's main concern was that i- in most basins, if it becomes a problem, the town can go do something about it. In this case, if the town has to, they can, they can do it, and then they can, they can seek, you know, repayment for expenses if need be.
Is the town able to do that? Is the town able to keep a, monitor that, make sure they do what they do?
Please stay muted.
Mark, I have a question for Jamie about that.
Go ahead.
Jamie, what's preventing somebody, if you say the town will go in and do it, and, and then we would just charge them what it costs, then if these homeowners said, "Well, okay, just charge me what it costs", that's, that's, to me, that's not a, that's not a plan. Do you know what I mean? There has to be like a 150%, you know, or a 200% charge. Do you know what I mean? Because then they just say like, "Oh, oh, I'll just have them do it", you know? That's easy. When they come and they see it's a mess, they'll fix it, and they'll send me a bill. You know what I mean?
Yeah, I, and, and again, I don't know what the rates the town charges, but I do know if the town had to hire a subcontractor to go out there, prevailing wage rates apply from my understanding, unless it's a sole proprietor. I think you're going to find that those rates would be astronomical compared to a small, a smaller firm that would typically do this. The operation and maintenance out here is very minimal. It's, it's your standard type of basin. Nick's main concern was, was overgrowth in the forbey. You know, and we have, we have a catch basin that will need to be clamshelled every once in a while. You know, every few, few years, most likely. I don't see any major, major potential failures as far as anything that's high maintenance, but vegetation will be need to be upkept in the basins, and they will have to make sure that the catch basins have the sediment removed from time to time.
So in, in his, in his maintenance recommendations, he didn't prioritize the trench drain very high at all?
No, he, he didn't, he didn't make it any more of a priority over anything else. His, in fact, the concern he expressed to me verbally was the growth in the forbey.
Okay.
You know, and, and that, that seemed to be his number one area of concern. But I don't think, Nick's a good engineer. I don't think that he, he, that he wasn't thinking, he was thinking about all the aspects of it, I believe, Peter.
Yep, okay.
Hi, this is Barbara. I have a question for Attorney O'Shaughnessy. If we, this maintenance plan was to be implemented, can that be utilized as a deed restriction? And can we require that the contractor who does the work be licensed to perform that type of work? Because one of the concerns that I have is if homeowners were to try to do the work themselves, they might try to use, like, you know, I think of someone putting like a weed killer product just to deal with maybe vegetation, not recognizing that we have a protected area very proximate to the property.
Well, yes, so, so the intent of the restrictions is to create the ability for the, the property owners to go in and do their own maintenance and take care of the roadway, so the town doesn't have to. And, and we added a provision in there giving the town the ability, not the obligation to go in, but the ability to go in if, if there was a real big safety concern. So something really needed to be addressed sooner than later, so they could go in and cure it. And, and we added in almost like a back charge feature, if you will. But we, we could add some stuff into the document that says, that restricts the use of, like a roundup type of product. So you can't kill, kill the weeds that way. You have to do it some other way. That, that, we can do that. That shouldn't be an issue.
Well, there are some chemicals that are allowed to be used in resource areas as well. In conservation, we let people spray all the time in Long Pond, and it gets monitored and goes right into our swamp. That, in fact, the neighborhood of Parkhurst has an ongoing condition that they can spray annually or put pellets down to kill weeds in the, in the pond. Jamie, would you mind zooming in on the notes on the plan so we can?
Yeah, so, if I may, just, so we have, we have a section here for operation and maintenance. This, this might be, this might be the best way to go when looking at this. So this, this is typically what we propose to a scale like this for stormwater management for bigger plans. But this is how we view type of repairs or, well, operation and maintenance for a long-term functioning drainage facility. So as you can see, we go through, we talk about the responsible parties. That does transfer with ownership. But in this case, we're talking about routine maintenance is the debris and litter removed from all paved areas, catch basins, detention basins, outfalls, surrounding areas twice per year, reseeding if there's any type of erosion or slumping and regrading if need be. And then mowing detention basin, side slopes twice a year. You don't want to cut it too short because you don't want it to die, but you also don't want it to grow up into, into a hayfield either. And then it talks about the periodic maintenance of cleaning the, the sumps in the, in the catch basins, a minimum of once a year, and inspected monthly during construction. But after the construction part is over, monthly, yearly cleaning should be more than adequate for a paved road in this situation. And then non-routine maintenance, they want you to just make sure that, you know, over time, that pipes, drainage basins, you know, and, and the likes are, you know, are inspected. And if there are any signs of deterioration, cracks, structural flaws, that they be addressed as needed. In this part right here, the stormwater management system shall be inspected after two years of full operation by an engineer. That's something you can put into the decision to make sure that that is, that that is done, and look for your report in two years after construction. And then you'd receive a letter from some, an office like mine or another one that, that has retained to do such. And then what we do is we, we give an estimate on what we think yearly will be to, to do the operation and maintenance out here. And we estimated somewhere in the ballpark of $300 on, on an average year to, you know, to mow the grass twice and to clean, clean the sediment, because we don't believe the catch basin is going to fill up and warrant cleaning every year. I know most of the, the basins, they can go several years without being cleaned, but they should be looked at at a minimum.
So the only thing that I I don't like about the stormwater management notes there is the responsible party. I get currently the owner.
Yes.
Is the applicant.
Yes.
But could that be written in there that it would be transferable to be the responsibility of lots one, two, and three? Because I know Bob currently owns the, the road, and he's going to maintain it until it's all sold and inspected by the town. But that, that's, I think the goal of this is to make sure that the, the residents aren't calling Bob.
Sure. I, I mean, we, I think we'd even be amenable to attach a document similar to this to go along with the, with the restriction that gets recorded.
Yeah, that's what I was just going to suggest. I mean, we, we could add this to the, the proposed declaration of restrictions and work it in somehow. That way you have the operations and maintenance plan, you know, recorded the registry of deeds. So it'd be very easy to go back and... you know, recorded at the registry of deeds, so um, it'd be very easy to go back and, and say, oh, here it is right here. It's, it's on the plan. It's in the document. You know, this is what we have to do and go forward.
Yeah, al- ultimately, that's what we're looking for, but we, we want it to be clear. I get it currently right now, Robert Pelucci owns the land.
Uh huh.
The goal is that because it's a private way and he's probably gonna sell some, if not all of that, that we, we want it to be clear on the plan that it's the responsibility of the property owners.
Sure. Um, what we can do is, if it would appease, uh, appease the board is we can write down over in here, um, responsible party, um, Robert Pelucci or um, or future owners.
Yeah, their successors and assigns or something for that.
Yeah, you can definitely add, add a note to this. That, that's
I would like that.
That sounds fine. Okay. Yeah, that's not a problem.
And I actually, I have a question on um, number thirty, the item number thirty. Was there supposed to be a number of years listed there or is it just indeterminate? Uh, not on this, but on the contract.
Oh, um, that might be.
No, thi- this runs with the property. The restrictions run with the property for uh, thirty years. And after, after thirty years, um, the restrictions would have to be extended by the property owners.
Does it say thirty years now in there?
Uh, it, it doesn't, but that's what the statute is. We can add it in if you like.
Now, is it something that's typically understood or, or should it be?
Uh, uh, either way, I, I can add it in if, just, just for clarity's sake and, and make reference to the particular statute. That's fine. That's not a problem.
Attorney O'Shaughnessy, you, uh, this is Barbara again. You had indicated that um, by statute, the limit is thirty years. Um, there's, so there's no way to automatically renew this obligation, even if we're trying to write it in to make sure we protect that.
That's correct. That's correct. The property owners would have to do so.
But they could always look back at the registry and this would be there.
Yes, absolutely. Right, yep.
Okay. Does any, any other board members have any questions or concerns?
Mark, I did have one more question. Are the, all of the conditions or the conditions that we're gonna talk about, are they gonna be printed onto the plan?
Um, well, I believe he has quite a few of them on the plan currently.
Okay, I know whatever you're gonna propose, I know we're gonna go through that probably.
Yeah.
I just remember Zink saying how important it was to get everything on, onto the physical plan for conditions and um, I ran into a situation professionally where they weren't and it's posing a problem, so I'm just curious how that's normally done.
Okay, so Jamie, I'm gonna read what my uh, my list of conditions was uh, the operations and maintenance plan to be included on a plan of record, which you have. Uh, an association of all lot and landowners on Bella's Way to be formed by the developer that clearly makes the operation and maintenance of the stormwater recovery system and road maintenance the responsibility of the residents of the subdivision.
Okay.
Have that. Would you say that's accurate or?
Yes, I, I believe that to be very accurate. That's, uh, the piece Michael prepared.
Uh, I, I spoke to you about a week ago that the town, the board would like to hold one lot's building permit uh, as a surety until the binder coat of the pavement is in place. And at that time, uh, the uh, bond be posted, uh, which is gonna be around eleven thousand dollars based on the length of road and what the board collects. Uh, and that bond will be held until completion of the roadway and written certification of construction compliance, which meaning top coat and a final inspection, uh, which you know, we wanna make sure it's certified. So the bond would be released when all road and stormwater drainage construction have been completed and inspected by HML associates at the cost of the developer. Said certification will be stated in a letter stamped by that engineer. Uh, number five, construction work hours would be limited to seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM on Saturday until four PM. No work on Sundays or holidays. Uh, all three lots would be restricted to residential zoning use, which I think Attorney O'Shaughnessy included that. Uh, we've got the no-cut zone, uh, which is shown on the plan between, between or behind thirty-five and thirty-seven and you proposed a fence uh, at the uh, retention pond. And the cleared area would be replanted. That's what I have for the conditions that I'd like. I think you've covered most of those either on the plan or in the uh, the finding that was drafted.
That's correct. I think um, for clarity, uh, we can, i- if it would, um, I'm gonna share the plan again, but I think the best way to maybe handle some of these, one of these concerns, um, I'm gonna go up a few sheets. So this is the sheet that gets recorded and I'm gonna zoom out a little bit. This is the definitive plan that gets recorded. It has notes, um, the areas, has the waivers requested on, on construction and everything else. What we can do is I believe, um, we can put in here, um, a reference to the operation and maintenance, reference a book and page in which it was recorded. Put a line on this definitive sheet and that way it says, operation and maintenance plan, see uh, see book and page at the registry of deeds recorded, just like we do if there's a covenant that's issued. Um, you know, on it as well. Or we could make it part of the performance covenant on this, where we also reference the um, the surety and the operation and maintenance and we could do that as well. Maybe that's the best way to do it is make it part of the covenant that we bring in um, when we come to get the MyLars signed if we get through the appeals period. Um, and we have all of that as part of the covenant, which is a fancy word for contract with the planning board that states everything that we're going to do. And it will be referenced on this uh, definitive plan in perpetuity.
Uh, I'm satisfied with that.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, um, I, I just wanna make sure that, that I understand. So, so you're, in your approval, if this is approved, you're gonna have in your decision a requirement that the owners of lots one, two, and three are forever responsible for the maintenance and repair of Bella Way and the associated drainage systems. And then the reason I say that is um, that, to me, that's a, a belt suspender's approach, where if, if that's part of your decision and I'm, I'm adding to it, supplementing it with my restrictions, if it ever became a, an, an issue in the future, the town could always point back to its decision and say, hey, we always intended for.
That's what we want. Belt suspenders to make sure that this road would never be adopted by the town. The town's not gonna maintain it. You guys gained the frontage to put three lots in, but it's not gonna be a burden on the town. And there's gonna be no misunderstanding that those residents, uh, should be as clear to them when they purchase the house that they are responsible or that property, that they are responsible for that.
Understood. And it's, yeah.
So if you don't mind unsharing your screen for a minute, Jamie?
Yes, sir.
And I wanna go through and see if we have any public comment. I recognize one person, um, Mr. Morrissey from Cross Street.
Hey, um, Mark, thanks for uh, sharing the updates. Um, Jamie, you and I had talked previously, um, the only concern I have is my leaching field.
Uh huh.
Um, I know you uh, reviewed the plans previously. There was a variance apparently because of space and there's only a one-foot buffer apparently. Um, that's, that's really my only concern, um, because I have limited space to, if it fails. Um, you know, I'm not an engineer, but I, I think I've got a limited space to put a leaching field in if, in fact, it fails. Um, I'm assuming you, you saw that?
Oh, y- you, we're aware of where your septic system is. Um, the, the thing, uh, Mr. Morrissey, that, that when we're looking at this is we're not doing any work on your property and nor would you be able to put your septic on their land. So even if you were right on the property line, um, that would be as far as the board could grant you a variance to go unless you had permission from the owner to go off of your property and a variance from the board of health. So I, I think if you needed to replace your field in kind or find additional room on your site, I don't think this road has any impact on you doing that.
Okay. Um, I mean, I'm, you know, I, I like this subdivision better than uh, some of the other options. Um, certainly not opposed to it and as long as you've taken that into consideration, um, it is what it is.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Yep, thanks for your comment, Mr. Morrissey. Uh, I, I'm looking and I don't see anyone else, but is anyone else here from Cross Street that would like to speak to this? That's uh, in a butter. Have no other comments. Um, so how do we wanna do this? It sounds like you might have to make a few modifications to the plan. Just to add a few things or uh, where are we with that? I'm gonna call it a finding that Mr. O'Shaughnessy put together as well. Would there be any amendments to that based on tonight's discussion?
Um, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure what finding you're referring to.
Oh, it's the covenants. I'm sorry. It's, there's the restrictions, easy and some covenants declaration.
Yeah.
So would, would we be making any changes to that?
Well, I, I, I think you'd, we'd refer to it as the form of the covenant attached here too. Um, and, and if you wanted to, to, as a requirement to, to submit a final, final form for the board's review and approval, yeah, that, that'd be fine with me. I have no issue with that.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, a- and, and I, I guess there's a question for Attorney O'Shaughnessy and, and the board. Um, I believe that an approval letter can still be sent to the town clerk so that the appeal period starts ticking. And in the interim, we can prepare the MyLars updated, get them to the board for review and um, and also send over the updated covenant as long as that's made as part of the motion that we do such. Am I, am I corrected that, Mike?
Oh, yeah, I, I don't see any issue. Why that couldn't be done.
So I, I don't think the change, the changes that we're looking for are major. Um, I think that it's just uh, some tweaking of the covenant and, and um, yeah, tweaking of the covenant by adding the operation and maintenance into the covenant and going um, adding the terms uh, future owner um, to the operation and maintenance on the plan. And we would actually, uh, we'd appreciate it if we could get a copy of the list of conditions as well, so we can make sure. I have them written down, but I didn't get the times for the limited work. Uh, that should probably be in the covenant as well, since that's gonna be part of the agreement.
All right, uh, let's see what I can do. Can you confirm that you received that? And I'll send it to the rest of the board and Kathy as well. The only thing that's not on there would be the, the note to send a letter of approval uh, to the town clerk.
Yes, we, we did receive it and I'll make sure that Attorney O'Shaughnessy gets it as well, so he can work it into the covenant. And then, um, do you think the beginning of next week, we can get a revised covenant to the board for review?
For this?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so we'll get a revised covenant to the board the beginning of next week. Um, so you have plenty of time to review prior to uh, the MyLars being ready, um, you know, to be signed from the clerk.
And you'll send those electronically, so, cause we don't have an office to go to?
Yep, we'll, we'll send them to Kathy and um, and she can forward them to everybody if that's okay.
Yeah, yeah, that would be awesome. Um, so Kathy, um, I don't know if you heard that, but they're asking also is if we made a motion tonight to approve the subdivision, that uh, a letter be sent with maybe the, the, include the motion and its approval to send to Lillian.
Yep.
It would start the appeal process that would note that it's been approved. So I just wanna have a, a, a letter drafted with your letterhead recognizing that and I'll, I'll send the board the entire motion. Um, so at this point, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and recommend approval of Bella's Way, thirty-nine Cross Street with the following conditions. Number one is an operations and maintenance plan be included on the plan of record. Number two, an association of lots and landowners on Bella's Way be formed by the developer. It clearly makes the operation and maintenance of the stormwater recovery system and road maintenance the responsibility of the residents of the subdivision. Three, one lots building permit be held as a surety until the binder coat of the pavement is in place. At that time, a bond would be posted for eleven thousand dollars and held until completion of the roadway and written certification of construction compliance. Uh, to follow up on that, number four, the bond will be released when all road and stormwater drainage construction have been completed and inspected by HML associates at the cost of the developer. Said certification will be stated in a letter stamped by the engineer to the planning board. Uh, five, construction work hours will be limited to seven AM to five PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM to four PM on Saturdays and no work on Sundays or holidays. All three lots are restricted to residential zoning use only. Uh, well, residential zoning. Uh, seven, a no-cut zone be shown on the plan of record, uh, at the rear property lines of thirty-five and thirty-seven Cross Street. Uh, and the cleared area behind thirty-five Cross Street be replanted within the no-cut zone uh, with native evergreen trees by the applicant. Uh, and finally, a letter of this approval be sent to the town clerk as soon as possible to start the appeal period. Can I get a second?
I'll second that, Mark.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor, roll call. Barbara?
Hi.
You here?
Hi.
Michelle?
Hi.
Myself, I. Motion carries unanimously. And that's that. So Jamie, you'll get us that information over the next week or so and you're off and running?
Yes, sir. Yep.
All right, very good.
Have a good night.
Thank you. You too, Mr. O'Shaughnessy. Um, so next on our agenda is an A&R plan at seventy-three Holland Mode, Holland Road, uh, which is with Jamie from Zenith.
All right. Good evening, Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. Um, tonight, the A&R plan is, uh, before you was, um, something that was discussed when, uh, one of my, my coworkers, uh, Niall Zager, had presented uh, subdivision off of Holland Road called Pauline's Path. Um, this is the A&R for the lot with the existing house on it. Um, if the chair allows, I'd like to pull that up on the screen.
Go right ahead.
Thank you. All right, so um, in front of you is the A&R plan that's been submitted. Um, and essentially what we're doing here is this is the exact same lot that was shown on the definitive subdivision. the definitive subdivision, and it was entitled A and R Lot. The remaining land is the subdivision that was that was done as Pauline's Path. As you can see, the curve here was the entrance end on the right of way coming up this way. And we're looking tonight for endorsement from the planning board that that this meets the requirements of a Form A plan.
So can I speak to that, Mr. Bissonette?
No, please.
So, board members, I'm sure you remember the Pauline's Path subdivision, and I think this is just a formality thing. The way that it was presented, I had asked that it be separately listed as a Form A just because of the unknown factor of, I think, the there was a right of first refusal on the town, and we wanted to make sure that this was a separate A and R off of that plan in case the land got sold to the state rather than the developer. So I've reviewed, and I think that that the lot complies fully with the A and R requirements. And again, it's just, I think, a formality. Does any other board member have any comment?
I'd like to make a motion to approve, Mark.
Motion to endorse the A and R plan for 73 Holland Road?
I'll second that.
Correct.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, vote aye. Motion carries unanimously. So that's all set. And next on the agenda will be meet with Mr. Jamie Bissonette regarding Col- Colpat Drive subdivision.
Again, good evening, Jamie Bissonette for the record. Mr. Riley is also here tonight. He's the owner of the property. I'm going to pull the plan up so we can discuss discuss it. This was a subdivision that's been previously approved by the planning board. And the the seven years on the existing subdivision is approval is coming and going. And so the the owner of the property, Mr. Riley, has been in front of the planning board last year. And at that time, he this was pre-COVID. He was he was advised to bring the plan in, renew with new stamps, and and they would they would reapprove the plan. But in in that time period, Azor has has closed. And so he he finally, he was able to track us down because we we did. We do employ John Pink at at our survey office, and we were able to find some of the files here. And so I'm going to pull up the plan and show it to the board, and we'd like just to get an unofficial nod or direction in which way the board would like for us to move forward with this, if possible, so that we make sure we're doing the right thing. So this this was the definitive subdivision plan. As as I've been made aware, that that was that was approved. Am I correct with that, Mr. Riley? Mr. Riley? John, we can't hear you.
No sound, yeah.
No sound, okay. Mr. Riley dropped this plan off to my office, and and I believe this is one of the pages in the definitive set that was done by Azor and approved by the planning board. And so, as you can see, it's a wavered subdivision off of Hill Street. I believe that this is this project is a little bit north of Maya Lane. And it obviously Hill Street goes up to Montgomery Street, and I believe Pickens Street is to the south as oriented on this plan. So he would be looking to have the subdivision plan essentially reendorsed as it has been in the past. If not, he he would most likely look at the option of trying to construct this now, but he'd rather hold off on the construction and move move forward with just a reendorsement, you know, to to make sure that he keeps what he has going forward.
I believe we had a brief conversation about this. Is Lot 1B his house?
Yes, 1B is his house.
And was his intent for when he retires to do this, or is it for lots for his kids or something? I forget.
Yeah, John, John had referenced to me that these were for his children. John, can you shake your head if that is correct?
That's correct, yes.
Oh, we can hear you now, great.
Good.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay, so Mr. Riley, what's your plan now? What's your long term plan?
Well, I'm actually retired now, so I can focus on this and start the process, but I realized, I think I went last September, October, knowing that, you know, knowing that was the timeframe was coming up, so I just need another period of time to get it going, basically, so.
And it's expiring before you have the time?
Right.
So I I can't speak for the whole board. And obviously, we can vote on it, but I would say overall, yeah, we would approve. But we're we're probably quite a different board than seven years ago when this was done. Would your intent for this to be a private way as well?
Correct.
So the only thing that I might say is that we would some of the similar conditions that we did tonight on that other subdivision, we might want to impose that, you know, to keep that from being a town road and that those those lots be responsible for the the drainage of. So if you reapplied, we just want to condition it to protect the town as well, but we we would probably have no problem with you putting that roadway in.
Okay, thank you very much.
I don't want to speak for the whole board. I mean, we can ask, but I don't want to make an official vote on it, but what's your feeling, Peter?
Could could Jamie go to page one of this? Where's the is there any description of of a turnaround or a T or what's at the end?
It looks, Peter, the both of these sheets are the same. Page one and two are both identical. It appears that my my office manager scanned in the same plan twice. And this was the only plan that I believe I was given. We're going to try to, we're going to try to find the rest of them, I'm sure. I would guess the Registry of Deeds probably has some. I know that Azor's paper files are gone, so I might even have to ask Kathy to try to dig this out of the the files in the basement at some point. But it appears that they attempted to do a hammerhead in this Y-like configuration down here. I spoke with Mr. Riley about that and let him know that there have been a couple of changes since this came into effect. One would be the 20-foot width for the fire, for the fire chief. And then two would be making sure that we can turn the ladder truck around like we just did on on Bella Way. Besides that, I, you know, I'd want to look at the rest of the plans, but I don't see anything major here. This this looks like a really a good layout, and I I actually believe I'm going to butter to this property as well, and and, you know, I I I perf- I welcome it.
And could I ask one other question, Jamie? This is the first we've seen of this. So I just want to those lots as drawn on that plan from seven years ago conform with today's front yard circle and all those things that?
They appear to, but again, that will be part of my due diligence in going forward on this. You know, we'll we'll have to make sure the property lines that that it conforms with all the zoning, because the zoning, you're right, has changed, and the the seven-year lock on the plans is more of a zoning lock than anything. So it's more of a zoning freeze in case things change. So that zoning freeze, I believe, is gone, but from looking at this plan, it looks like that he would be fine. And if not, it would be a minor change right in this vicinity here cul-de-sac-wise to get him in compliance. I I don't think that there's going to be any major changes here.
All right, so I would say, and again, not speaking for the entire board, but as long as you came back with a plan that did conform with current zoning and the requirements needed to keep it a private way, and again, satisfy the fire chief and Board of Health and those needs, I I have no problem with this plan.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Okay, and next on the agenda, we have meet with Jamie Bissonette regarding GIS system.
All right. All right, so I I had had a conversation with Barbara. Actually, I don't I don't see on anymore. But Barbara and I had a discussion regarding GIS and and the ability for GIS to really take, you know, take the town in a nice, positive step forward for organization and planning. A lot of towns have a nice GIS system. In fact, the town of Lakeville now with on the assessors page has a GIS reference. So what I wanted to talk about was, but what I wanted to kind of go over was with GIS, in in our case, I believe the GIS is based on Mass Grid Coordinate System. Oops, sorry, Mike.
Just Kathy, could you just make a note that it looks like Barbara dropped out of the meeting, maybe her cell phone lost service or something? So that after the informal meeting with Jamie about Colpat Drive, Barbara may have not been in the meeting. Just so if we take any more votes, it may be only a three-member vote unless she comes back in. Sorry, Jamie.
Nope. And so what I wanted to do is just real briefly kind of show on our CAD, but which is also the the software with the with the technology on Mass Grid is is amazing and what you can do with it. For example, our GIS equip, our GPS equipment that we use is programmed to locate things on Mass Grid and NAVD-88. And NAVD-88 is the datum that's used for flood on FEMA's mapping. And so in with our GPS, I can go up to a site, I can locate a point in within almost immeasurable distances, I can have an elevation and a horizontal location. And we can come back and drop that onto a plan set that will fall right in line with the GPS data system that the assessors are currently using now. And so, for example, the city of Taunton requires two GPS points on a property so that in the future, they can reference, or even possibly now, they can reference where things are in location horizontally in their city. And that that would, it it might not be something we can implement now, but it would be a great thing going forward for not only things like wells, but also catch basins for DPW, areas of importance, or, you know, possibly any any site features that, you know, any board in town feels is worth noting can be picked up and put on the system with with minimal effort. So what I'd like to do is share, share my screen with you for a minute, because I have a quick little CAD presentation that I can show if if the chair is okay with that.
Absolutely.
All right. All right, so as you can see, this is this is my screen. This is AutoCAD that we're using right now, and it's a program called Civil 3D, but it's it's made by Autodesk. And what this is, is this is essentially the state's the state's version of our tax mapping all put out, and and these red lines break up the towns. And so we have all the abutting towns. In fact, this drawing right here has the entire state's assessor mapping put into a CAD format. And what's nice about this is, for example, well, let's let's pick let's pick this piece right here. You can click on a parcel, and over on the screen, it will tell, it it'll tell you exactly what this is, which is 28 Precinct Street, tells me the map block and a lot of information about it. But what it does is it it also has fixed coordinates on Mass Grid, again, which is very important. And what it does is it allows you to overlay and turn on layers. But it also allows, let's say the DPW was to was to obtain a GPS unit, or like you had said earlier, you're talking about hiring a consultant. These consultants, if they need to go out and locate catch basins as part of going forward with with the maybe the role of having a planner or something along those lines, having things on Mass Grid in a system will benefit them in a large, large way. And so, as you can see on the screen, the the ability to input photos and the likes with relative ease is it it'll, the the stuff, the information that you pull in falls right in place because it's all referencing the same, the same datum, the same, the same grid. So, for example, if we want to take, these are Zone 2s, Zone 1s, IWPAs, we we can take and bring in any of these, any of these this information, and we can drop it right in because it's all on the same coordinate system. And that's how your system would also work with a matter of pressing buttons on the screen. It would be much simpler than what I'm doing, but you can see you can see how it would work being on the same datum. So we would be able to turn on and find where the flood mapping is around the ponds. We could, we could turn on the layers of where DEP has wetlands or specific soils or or protective protective areas that that the, you know, that the DEP is trying to protect, whether it's solid waste, public water supply wells, wetlands, tributaries, and the like. And so basically, what I wanted to talk about, or what Barbara and I talked about, was how much value this could bring into the to the town in the long term. You know, for record keeping and for planning, this would be big for a planner coming into town to have the ability to have a nice GIS system in place. And I would recommend, if you get a get a chance, take a look at the town of Stotons, the town of Attleburrows. You know, GIS systems, they're fantastic. Some of them are so far advanced that you can click on it and see the deeds, see any plans that have been recorded, whether they're Board of Health, building permit, building permit plans, they're very informative. And, you know, and and it's nice for a board like yourself to be able to have that resource. So again, that was pretty much what I wanted to show tonight. I think it was what I was asked to show, and I I try to answer any questions if you have any, but please understand, GIS-wise, there are people that know a lot more than I am. I mean, they offer bachelors and I believe master's degrees in GIS now.
So with that presentation, and maybe playing off your discussion with Barbara, I believe you said, is that something you're proposing that the town offices would have that access to?
What I what I think, what I what I think I'm getting at is that that we we, the discussion has been started now, and and I've kind of pointed the board members in in a couple of useful directions to websites that have these resources. I think it's important that the board look at those sites and determine if those resources are valuable to the board. And I think you're going to find that they are. I think they're they'd be very valuable to a Board of Health, to a Conservation Commission, because they can have data of abutting wells, any major resource areas, and and other plans that have been done so that you're not having to try to remember what was approved 30 years ago. You can click on a link and see it relatively easy. I I think it's a great way to keep track of things and have things organized. But again, it's going to be something that you've got to feel out, look into, and see what's applicable in how it can improve, you know, the planning board and the town overall.
Yep.
So.
Excellent, I we appreciate the the presentation and the information about that.
Yeah, no, no, my pleasure. And again, you know, I just, I I know it's a fantastic thing, and Barbara and I talked about it, and and I wanted to just bring it to everybody's attention, because there are people that don't know it exists and how integrated it is. The state actually has an entire website set up for GIS where we can download amazing information for free, including including aerial photos and everything else that that work into that can work into that system. And so long-term planning, I think it's a, it could be a fabulous thing for the town.
So is the whole thing free or just?
Well, there are data layers that are free, that the that the state has on on their website that we can grab, and anybody can. But the system itself, I I don't know how integrated the existing GIS system the town has and the capability of it. And I won't pretend to know. What if if it does pique interest of the board members? What if if it does pique interest of the board members, recommend maybe reaching out to some of these towns that have that. A lot of them have GIS coordinators, or they have outside consulting departments that do that for them. And and figuring out what they use for software, what kind of investment it is, if any, you know, and looking at it that way because because I I think it would, it would be, I've said it over and over, I think it'd be a nice benefit for the town.
I have used the one.
One at a time.
Sorry, guys. I'm so sorry. I was all excited because I finally got back in. I was called in on the other line listening, and I couldn't, you guys couldn't hear me talking. I believe the town of Lakeville has already made some investment in this regard. We can double check that. Maybe I'm mistaken, but that's the reason I asked Jamie about this to begin with, was I believe that we are already moving down this path. So I'll leave it there.
Yep. Yeah, it it has a lot of, a lot of amazing capabilities, really does. So it's something that the board member should look at and possibly, you know, possibly look at expanding for your use or taking advantage of its of it, of its pros, you know, of its options.
Yep.
I'm definitely interested because I have used the one on the assessors page. And I'd be curious to compare to Stoughton and Attleboro, like you said, and see if, you know, what's the difference?
Oh, yeah. When you turn on some of the, some of the towns and cities that have more developed GIS systems, you'll be able to turn on catch basin layers, hydrants, street, street signs, storm, storm drains, sewer drains, you name it. And you can click on some of them, and they'll tell you how deep they are, what size the pipes are, culverts, pretty much everything. They really get into it. And I'm not saying we need to be there, but we we should, we should start because most towns have and cities. I can't think of a city that hasn't.
Well, we should definitely push for that.
All right. Well, again, that was it. I hope I, I hope I answered any of the stuff we talked about, Barbara.
Thank you very much, Jamie.
Anytime. All right, everybody. Have a great night.
Thanks, Jamie. Very helpful. Awesome.
So next on the agenda, we have to review some zoning Board of Appeals petitions. First one is Bujinga 33 Shore Drive. Has anybody had a chance to look through these? Do you have any comment? How about you, Michelle? Did you get a chance to look through any of these?
I did. I looked at them. I wasn't sure if this was something that we typically remain silent on because it's BOA. I was curious to know myself, you know, if the, if there have been variances of this type allowed in the past. I thought they, you know, the first one, the shed was already built, and he's looking for variance now. And then Betty's Neck, you know, it doesn't seem like it fits a buildable sized lot. I was, but they were trying to say that because there was a previous structure, but the previous structure was back in the 1980s, so it was a while ago. So, I mean, I found them all kind of interesting. How do you typically proceed with these?
Well, you you bring up a good point to the Betty's Neck one. Because it is an undersized lot, and there are processes to tear down a building and put up a new building. But if it's, that makes it pre-existing, non-conforming, and you're grandfathered to receive a variance if you can be not more. Let, you wouldn't be less conforming. But when there's no building, and it was just a historical footnote, I don't know that that's a legitimate gripe to say we should, we should be grandfathered. So the Bujinga one for 33 Shore Drive, I have no comment.
Yeah, I agree, Mark. No comment from, from me as well.
Betty's Neck one, I mean, I don't necessarily think that I mean, they're basically taking an undersized lot and trying to make it a buildable lot. That would be like somebody coming to us with an A in our lot that's only 20,000 square feet.
The the ZBA will, will handle it as they always do. So I I don't have necessarily anything for that one either, you know?
Keith, I'd like to ask you a procedural question. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. My question is, in the past, planning board has seemed to have not really commented much on these papers that come through for ZBA. Do you have any feedback? Was, or am I mistaken? Has it been, it just seems to be my recollection in the past three years, but you've certainly been on the board much longer than I.
Yeah, Barbara, I I think we just kind of felt as though the the ZBA is set up really to handle this. And they do an excellent job at listening to like the, because all we get is, is the most vaguest drawings. Some of them are much worse than hand drawn. And so like, you really can't make a judgment. So a lot of times, we just kind of read through it. That we have made a few comments over the years, not a lot, though, you're right. And on on occasion, we do chime in and we just say, hey, I, a few in particular were ones that showed some, some roads that were on some maps but weren't on others. And we we asked for them to clarify, like, their driveways, which weren't clarified at all, but stuff like that, we would make a quick note on. And other, other times, we, most of the time, we just like pass it on and and let them handle it.
So Kathy, are we supposed to take a vote on each of these?
Yeah.
So on 33 Shore Drive, I make a motion to have no comment to the zoning Board of Appeals.
I second that.
All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle? And myself, aye. I really, I'm going to jump to 32 Fuller Shores. I make a motion to not send any comment to the zoning Board of Appeals regarding 32 Fuller Shores.
A second.
All right. Motion in a second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Aye.
Barbara?
Aye.
Michelle? You have to unmute to say aye.
All right. I didn't realize I was aye.
I saw your mouth movement, so I figured it was aye. And myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously, no comment. I really would not recommend approval. I don't know. I guess, I guess no comments. It's 1.1 acres. There's probably plenty of, plenty of frontage. We'll let them in the Board of Health fight it out. So I I motion to make no comment on Iafredi Johnson Betty's Neck Road, map six, block four, lot 25.
I'll second that, Mark.
Our motion in a second. All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries unanimously. We make no comment. So the next on the agenda is the July 23rd and the January 23rd minutes of meeting. I had a comment about the January one. Has everybody reviewed the minutes?
Yes.
Yep.
All right, I'm going to make a motion to approve the July 23rd, 2020 Planning Board Minutes of Meeting.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Present motion carries unanimously to approve the July 23rd minutes of meeting. Forgive me, I just need to look really quick. I had a, a note. Here we go. This one's for Kathy. On fourth page, it's under the, discuss the bylaw creation for design standards for business-owned new construction. In I believe it's the second paragraph, depending how my printer printed this from how it was a Word document. Mr. Knox said, "The only issue is the current bylaws takes 50% lot coverage before the density bonus is triggered, blah, blah." The next sentence, "He would like their import from their experience." Would that be input?
Believe so, yeah.
Okay. I think that's the only thing that I had was just to change that. So I make a motion to approve the January 23rd minutes with the changes as noted.
So moved. When you make the motion, I'll second it. Sorry.
Yes. Motion in a second. Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
I think I have to abstain because it was before me, I think.
Yes.
So I abstain.
And I approve. So motion carries with a majority with one abstention. So the next thing we have on the agenda is the master plan implementation. So who wants to go? I'm going to start implementing. Something we wanted to keep on the agenda so it doesn't not get done. Has anybody had any time to?
I gotta be honest, Mark. I haven't had time. I I I'm, I'm straight out. I'm gonna, I plan on making time as soon as I can.
Okay.
Well, that's just how it, how it's been, so.
Michelle, go ahead.
Okay, so the first, referring to my spreadsheet that I came up with here, the first item for 2020 is actually what we discussed already with the BOS about hiring a town planner. So I did look into some local towns, just to see what they do. Wareham and Rochester share a town planner. They each pay a portion of the salary. And then they each have that planner in-house for a certain number of days during the week. The town of Middleborough, their current planner, according to her, her Indeed profile, she was the town planner and conservation agent for 10 years in Rehoboth, which I thought that was kind of interesting because if you look for year 2022, one of the strategies is to hire a full-time conservation agent to help identify and protect important areas in Lakeville. So I just thought that was kind of interesting. I thought if we could afford a full-time person, it might be helpful if it's somebody who is familiar in both to maybe get, check both of those items off. I know what we discussed with the Board of Selectmen and what we've kind of put in place is you want to kind of come up with a list of things that we need from a planner. I think that's great, great first step. And and then also, I think it was, you know, checking out all the consulting firms and what they have to offer as well. So, I mean, I think at least we're kind of working at that first goal for 2020.
Yeah. So to to actually play off of that, and Kathy, we've already asked to have on the August 27th meeting the description and needs or requirements of whether it be a consulting engineer or a planner. So why don't we focus on one thing at a time for the master plan? And that'll be our focus for the next meeting as part of the master plan slash planner discussion would be, we need to come up with some sort of a job description that, and again, that's whether we hire a consultant in the meantime or to have a planner do those duties. I think we want to look at how a project gets approved, look through the the bylaws and regulations for, you know, it's those some of the, like a spreadsheet that Michelle's done, or some of the punch list checklist things that I've done, and Kathy's done some, that those are the things that we want a planner to be looking at or that consultant to look at. Everybody, maybe if you have some time, delve into that 43D process to see, and again, like conditioning a site plan and review. And if it abuts residential land and it's commercial development, we have certain rights to condition for privacy buffers and noise buffers. And those are the things that we would want this individual looking at. And again, that's where it kind of veers to from whether it's a planner or a consulting engineer. Usually, a consulting engineer firm would have more resources, and they'd be doing traffic studies and things like that. But that would be, and a planner would be reviewing that traffic study for us. So I think, you know, to to continue with the planner or consulting engineer plan, I'd like everybody to try to come to the next meeting for that portion of the discussion of let's combine it as master plan and planner consulting of their thoughts and needs that we think the position needs to have. I know Barbara has said that we need to know the capabilities, and an engineer could tell us how much more they could do. She's probably right, but we need to start somewhere. And I think look, look within our regulations to come up with what we want some of that description to be.
And and Mark also?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
You go ahead, Michelle.
Oh, I was just going to say that I know the last time we had kind of discussed that 43D was only applicable to the hospital site. But the master plan is actually looking for us to implement, implement that for also the former Dewey's Bowling Alley site as well. That's goal for 2026. So just to throw that out there, because I know we had talked about it, and, you know, that was the only location currently. But master plan is looking for us to implement 43D again in the future, so.
I I did see that in there. I don't disagree with that being part of the master plan. I just think that that we shouldn't favor that property because the current owners don't want to sell it. That's been on the market on and off for 20 years. I put an offer on it 18 years ago. It was reasonable, and they just, I don't think they can get their stuff together. So I don't think that we should give them an advantage. I I'm a little apprehensive about making that a 43D expedited permit thing just because they've sat on it until it's become that dilapidated that we feel like we need to do something for them.
Well, I think it's more like the town is took a looking at it and would like to see something good and useful go in that location. I mean,
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to see an unfair advantage because they've been crap the owner. You know, let's talk about that more. We have six more years before we have to.
Mark, so one of the comments, am I on mute still? Okay, I'm not on mute. Okay. One of my comments is with with respect to implementation. So this is going to be a multi-year project, and I love the booklet that we have, and I love the spreadsheet. But my suggestion is, and maybe somebody has something that's better, but like on our weekly agenda, perhaps what we can do is have a section related to master plan, not weekly agenda or bi-weekly agenda, that says, you know, master plan. And then I'd love to see like what action items we were responsible for. Like, so today you're giving us an action item. And we need to And we need to remember to get those done for us before the next meeting, right? So if we had them on the agenda, those action items in a separate section under just master plan implementation or something, just to keep us all on the same page. Again, maybe not the best suggestion, I'm just trying to think of a way to kind of keep it in front of us and keep it fresh from week to week.
That's a good suggestion, Barbara. I, I can speak for myself in saying I need that.
Yeah, so.
Direction is a good thing.
Michelle did a spreadsheet that kind of does some of that. Did you get to see that, Kathy?
I did, yep.
Do you think that's something you could work off to keep us all honest? And so when it's, let's just say we complete an item. Or, you know, or we get to a point where there's no other action required for maybe this, this planner thing to then refer to that spreadsheet to then bring the next item to the top of the pile, just like I said, to keep master plan, not so much at the meeting, but the, the, the week before when we get the agenda, that it's in there for that action item from that spreadsheet to be like, let's start talking about it, even if it's a year or two or six years in advance.
Well, I have like an action item for my own, like I kind of look at a give to you, but then what I have to do. So if you want to tell me at the meeting what you want people to be responsible for, I can add that on to mine and then put it on to
Okay.
Put that up to you.
How about, Michelle, you update us of the next item on your spreadsheet as we filter through some of these to keep us posting them on the agenda, so then Kathy will keep them at the top of the list for us.
I have no problem with that. What, um, to avoid any open meeting law issues, should I just email Kathy? Do you want, should I just send it out as information to the group? What's the best?
Well, I think like tonight, we, we had the planner thing, everything kind of like converged that we were doing that, and it was actually one of the first items to do in the master plan. So at the next meeting, if we get through that planner thing, just be ready with the next one to say, hey, at the following meeting, this is what's next on the master plan implementation. So everybody start thinking about it and Kathy can at that point make a note to put it on the next meeting's agenda and will already be working on it. So that'll keep us from any open meeting law, which I don't think, we're not voting on it, so to speak, as much as just discussing. Like tonight, in new business, I want to just bring something up. We're not going to vote on it, I just want to talk about it, but if we did have to vote on it in the next meeting, we'd want to kind of put it on the agenda to ratify that vote. Is that not accurate, Kathy?
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, so with the master plan implementation, you had action required by the board, which typically means there's a vote. Do we need to actually vote on anything tonight, Kathy, or were we just gonna?
No, that was just, just in case that you did.
Okay, so on the new business, I just wanted to talk about, it's the it's the zoning portion of our bylaws that the, the hospital property will be permitted under, and it's the Development Opportunities District. And I don't know if anybody's read that, I think Michelle has. It's scary as hell. Basically, if you have a 25-acre parcel anywhere in town, the following uses shall be permitted by special permit in the Development Opportunities District. Manufacturing, industrial, processing, fabrication, high-tech warehouse, municipal, transportation terminal, hotel motel, research, development, office building, medical center, trade or professional school, retail, theater, restaurant. And I just think there's only like three numbered roads in Lakeville that I would say could handle the traffic of, let's just say, a hotel. But there's a lot of 25-acre parcels that are off the beaten path.
And, and Mark, with some of those projects, the fact that they have houses on them or can be combined, that doesn't matter when it comes to that kind of money, you know what I mean?
It doesn't.
It's not, it's not to say, oh, you can't, you can't put those five lots together because they have houses on them. When some of those projects are so expensive, they'll say, that's not a problem, you know?
Yep, and well, and, and that's not even it, it doesn't have to stay 25 acres, it can start 25 acres and then they can develop it into pieces as well, so there's a lot of freedom with this, but like I say, it's just, it scares the heck out of me to say that a distribution center can go anywhere there's a 25-acre parcel.
Yeah, so it sounds like we need a bylaw revision and that has to go to town meeting, right?
Well, so I emailed Nate about this, I had a little discussion with Michelle about it. And it sounds like our best opportunity is, there is some verbiage in here that says we can do something with our rules and regulations to try to control some of that development. But I also want to talk to town council just to see if not trying to spot zone, because we, we have zoning districts. But if we can again rewrite the bylaw to say that it has to be within so many it, I, my thoughts are, it has to have frontage on a numbered route. Or, you know, we could name those roads, it's no different than the marijuana overlay that we did to control that to Kenneth Welch Drive and Millennium Circle. And you name out the specific addresses that are eligible. But to try and keep them on Route 18, Route 105, and you know, maybe you say within a half mile of Route 140 at an exit ramp, but I don't want to see it just, you know, you, you have to go down three scenic roads to get the distribution center to the highway. So I think that's something that, because of the hospital property and reading through that, I think that's something that we should make an effort by the next town meeting is to either update our rules and regs or to change this bylaw a little bit to better protect the town. I would like everybody, if they have a chance, it's only about seven or eight pages long. Print it out and take a read of it. So maybe Kathy, at our next meeting, we could also have a Development Opportunities District discussion.
Now, would that be something we try to prepare for this upcoming fall town meeting?
I don't think we can get on the, the agenda at this point. Is it too late to, to get on the fall town meeting, Kathy?
I don't know when that is, so.
Well, I don't want to say no, that, you know, maybe we could, but we got to get the work done first anyway, so.
Mark, it seems like, it seems like when we were adding zoning changes in the past few years for the fall town meeting, that they were pretty far along by this point in August, do you know what I mean? You know what I mean? They were, they were getting reviewed by the legal services already.
I, I think that we'd be looking at next
Spring.
April or May, whenever that town meeting is. And we'd have, we'd have our work cut out for us to get it done by then. So, you know, that's something we need it done by January to get on the spring town meeting.
Mark, if you, if we have a minute, I have something for new business as well.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just a, just a, just a thought that everybody could think of. So a lot of towns' websites have, have a, like a generic email box for the different boards. With, especially like even building departments, especially, I've used those especially in the past four months. And they're very helpful. I was curious i- if the other board members would think that this would be helpful to like, say, have a generic mailbox to the planning board. You could name it like, say, like Ask the Planning Board. And we could review the emails that came in, you know. And I think this would help too with, I, I know that we all, we, we do get a lot of feedback about transparency and about information getting out to people as best as we do, but I know some people feel as though they're still not getting enough or timely, so. Barbara, what do you think? Is she there?
Oh, it looks like she's on.
Oh, well, what do you think, Michelle? I, I know that you can't, once the emails are sent, you know, they can't be just like forwarded haphazardly. But if there was a process in place where people would click and write an email, we could, you know, we could compile them and go through them, you know?
Well, I think the BOS has the option when you click on their name, you can do the fill form and it goes directly to that member. It sounds like a good idea, actually. I mean, I'm all for feedback and, you know, getting town involvement.
Bear in mind, some of the emails are gonna be, need to be filtered pretty heavily.
Yeah, probably.
But that goes with everything, you know? What do you think, Mark? I don't know.
I mean, I, I think we've been doing a pretty good job at transparency.
Oh, I, I, I agree. We're doing as best as a job we can do, considering we're all in five different buildings, you know. And Kathy's in the town hall and everybody's everywhere. It's, it's difficult. I just, if there was, you know, one like recurring comment I keep hearing from either, I don't follow social media at all, but my wife keeps me, you know, entertained is, is, you know, just, they keep pounding out transparency and information. So it's just a thought moving forward. I, I, I agree with the information. I think it's stuff that's been posted as best as we can, but.
Yeah, well, I think given from my personal experience, people don't look very hard for the information. And a lot of them
That's true.
Actually comically take it off social media.
Yeah.
You know, it's people float things out there about like my project.
Yeah.
Right? I don't, I'm not on social media, so I can't stop it. I don't really care, because I think most of that's again, it's the people that, they could go to the town website, they could look stuff up and they could actually watch a meeting or watch the meeting afterwards on LakeCam TV to, to find out the real information.
Right.
They wait and they hear somebody's gonna say, oh, I think it's gonna be an IHOP or a Sonic, and they go crazy.
Correct.
So, I don't know, I, I just think.
Wait, what's gonna be a Sonic? Tell us.
Your house.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
All right, well, I just threw it out there because I have used that feature on, on, in a few other towns. And, you know, let's say the building department in, you know, Seekonk, especially during the pandemic, I'll send them an email, hey, what do I do with this paper permit? You know, and they're like, oh, do this, this and this, done. And, you know, instead of trying to reach somebody by phone, almost impossible. If we had a, if we had a board email, I know that it would get a lot of clicks, but maybe after the dust settles, it would be a, it would be a pretty useful tool to get people, people's feedback, you know?
So I guess, I don't mind people getting the feedback or people giving some input, but to give you an example, tonight's hearing that was continued for Bella Way, how many people came to that with the mindset, that's going to be low-income housing, because that's what that guy does. They're gonna clear cut all the trees to, and that was never the intent, it was never and who's gonna filter and answer all these emails?
I know. Kathy.
You know, because, well, you know, you brought up a good point that, you know, you will find out what to do about a plumbing permit or a building permit somewhere. And then somebody paid within the town hall that you were inquiring to answer you.
You're correct. Yep.
And none of us are paid, none of us have the property, I'm, I have two jobs. I have all I can do to answer the current town emails that I get regarding this, which I don't mind, but I certainly don't want to, I don't want to be responsible for, and I don't think Kathy, do you want to, almost like a social media email coming into your?
No, yeah.
Well, I mean, I have an email up there and I don't really get a lot of questions.
Oh. Okay.
So there is a general planning there is a general planning board email address?
No, it's my email as the staff contact.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
So.
All right.
All right, very good.
Guess if anything was ever sent to you, you would pass it on if, if it was pertinent, I guess, anyways?
I mean, usually it's just different questions about developments, that type of thing. It's it's never really been from a resident, like what's going on over there.
So, Ed, one other thing I just wanted to bring up that Kathy, in the tonight's packet from the town administrator regarding Bella Way, which I know that's been passed, but the, the Board of Selectmen said they didn't have enough time to review it back then, and it's been continued, I think twice since that letter was drafted. I'm, I'm assuming that they had a chance to look at it the past month, they didn't say anything tonight, but do they realize we only have 45 days to act on something and?
Well, yeah, I was gonna ask you about that because I actually looked it up. And from what I found, unless that was changed, for preliminary plan, you have 90 days to act.
It's not a preliminary plan. They submitted
Oh, no, no, no. If, for preliminary, it's 90. If there is no preliminary, it's 135.
Is that with current COVID stuff, or is that in the subdivision control handbook?
Well, with COVID, right now, there is no
I still think you have to schedule the public hearing within a certain point, even though you have that much time to act.
Hold this up, is this what you have? Kind of like a little truth. This is what Zink gave me, and within 45 days, the Board of Health has to act. But the planning board has, like I said, those two dates in order to take action. So it's 135 days from the beginning of when you receive it. Now, I know they used to, like, the engineers used to come and distribute it to the boards and they only had 10 days. And I think I gave them two weeks, but I was gonna ask you where it is such a large timeframe. Do you want to give boards a month to review it before it's opened up as a public hearing?
I'll, I'll have to look at the regulation and the subdivision control handbook again, but I don't think that we can just sit on it for 135 days without
No, but at least like if they had at least two to three weeks to look at it. And then, so distribute that first and then schedule the hearing like right before, kind of more like a ZBA, which is what I usually do. Because whereas they only have the one meeting.
Yeah, I, I I feel like the plan, as soon as we receive it in and we acknowledge that we've received a subdivision, a definitive subdivision plan, or, or an A and R, the clock's ticking, and I think that they should be distributed immediately to every board other than us. You know, the Board of Health, the Board of Selectmen, the Highway Department, the police, the fire, they all should get it immediately. As soon as it gets entered in, they get their copies, because I think that's part of the, the application regulation is immediately circulate that. So I wouldn't hold it for a minute to, to let those boards get
Hold it before I posted it for a public hearing. Like, I think that one, there was a little bit of delay because it kind of came in the middle of COVID, I wasn't here all the time, it was crazy with catch-up, but like going forward, do you want to give the boards a little bit more time? I thought 10 days was like, I didn't think that was enough, but you know, do you want to go two or three weeks for them to be able to review that?
Well, I think it would be reasonable to say, again, based on when a plan is submitted, if you, let's just say it's submitted on a Monday. And the selectmen meet that night. They don't have time. And if their next meeting is two weeks, And if their next meeting is two weeks, then that, and there the, the whatever the longest duration of a board or department that's required to review a plan before we act on it, that's the maximum that we should be waiting to post it. So again, if it comes in on a Monday and the selectmen meet that night and they didn't get to look at it, they should be getting it that day. And the two weeks later is when they'll have time to comment for us to, at our following meeting, start to review the plan. And I know this, that depending on which day of the week, the month starts, sometimes there first and third, or second and fourth is a week off from ours. But so I would say two weeks just to let all of them respond, but not more than, and I'd, I'd definitely send them immediately. Don't hold them, even if
Yeah, well, now things are more back to normal, so that's a lot easier.
So what else have we got? I think that's it.
I just had one thing. There was no meeting scheduled for August. So I don't know if you want to have a motion, if you do want to have that second meeting. The 27th.
Is there anything, there's nothing else that has come in?
No.
Well, I, I guess I'm all right with motioning to forego the August 27th meeting, but I did say that we'd put a few things on the agenda. And those are things that we just need to work on in-house. So as long as everybody continues to work on those. And again, that's the, the planner or consultant description of what we're looking for. Was there anything else we had on that one? Oh, that development opportunities district that everybody kind of worked on that, then I'm fine with, we forego until we had it written down, right?
September 10.
September 10th, so. Yeah, make a motion to forego the August 27th meeting because we have no active hearings and our next scheduled meeting would be September 10th at 7 o'clock.
Second.
All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion carries with a majority. It looks like we lost Barbara again. So I'm going to make a motion to adjourn the planning board meeting and reopen the PAA meeting. To ratify All right, I have a motion in a second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself. So the planning board meeting comes to a close and we reopened the Plan Approval Authority meeting. So we previously opened this meeting and we Kathy, can you tell me, did we officially reopen this meeting? Because I know we had that technical glitch with Lake Cam.
Yes, well, you, I don't think you reopened it, but you motioned to recess it.
I reopened it and recessed it instantly.
Okay.
So we reopening this official, make a motion to reopen the Plan Approval Authority meeting. Can I get a second?
Second then, Mark.
All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. The planning, Plan Approval Authority meeting come to order. And I believe we motions to waive the reading of the minor change. So can I get a motion to approve the wave the provision of section 11 of the Plan Approval Authority and regulations with aspect to the proposed plan change?
So moved.
Second. So we have a motion and a second.
Okay, got you.
Approve slash, it's approve slash deny waive, the waive the provisions of section 11. All in favor of the approval of the waiving of the provision?
All right.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Mark, aye.
Sorry, it took me a minute to catch up with that, with the motion there. I mean.
I think it's drafted a little funny, but
Yes.
So the records show that Mark Knox, Peter Conroy and Michelle McCracken voted three votes to zero and that Barbara is no longer present at this time to waive section 11. So can I get a motion to approve or deny the changes as shown on the plan entitled Grading Plan Lot D Riverside Drive and Commercial Drive, Lakeville, Mass. Scale 1 inch equals 30 feet dated 10/31/2018 revised through 6/30/20 prepared by Zenith Consulting Engineers LLC, 3 Main Street, Lakeville, Mass., subject to the condition one set forth below.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Can I get a motion to approve the applicant's request to allow the affordable units on Lot D to be rented income eligible persons subject to condition two set forth below?
So moved.
Second. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. And can I get a motion to approve or deny the authorizing of Mark Knox chairman to execute this minor change of 40 R Plan Approval on behalf of the planning board as the plan authority?
So moved.
Second. All in favor? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself. And to read into the record, those conditions are number one, the applicant's engineer shall review the plan changes with HML associates to confirm the drainage system will have equal or less than impervious area than the previous approved design. And number two, the applicant shall obtain the approval of DHCD regarding the rented affordable units located in Lot D, which we did receive. And the appeals, any legal appeal arising out of a plan approval decision by the Plan Approval Authority under this section shall be governed by the applicable provisions of General Law Chapter 40 R. Any other request for enforcement or appeal arising under that section shall be governed by the applicable provisions of General Law Chapter 40 A. And I believe that ratifies the vote. Satisfied with that, Kathy? So I'm sorry, I did not get a chance to review the July 9th minutes. Did anybody get a chance to review them?
Yeah, I read the mark.
Plan Approval Authority?
Yep.
Would you motion to approve, Peter?
I would.
I would second that motion. So we have a second, a motion in a second to approve the July 9th, 2020 Plan Approval Authority minutes of meeting. All in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye. So under our new business, we have nothing. Under old business, we have received July 9th, 2020 email regarding residents at Nemasket River. I don't know that I have that in my packet. I have just a letter from Nick Laney. Is there something that I need to do with this email, Kathy? I have review from HML associates. And we have a bill that we could approve.
Bill, yep.
So I have Riverside Drive Drainage Review from HML associates for $250. Can I get a motion to approve that bill?
So moved.
Second, and all in favor, Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, aye. And I'm going to say that because we voted for me to be able to sign everything related to this, I can sign this one alone.
Okay. Sounds good to me.
I will sign this and put it in the vestibule.
Up to the window now.
I will. I'll wear my mask. And I believe that's everything we have for the Plan Approval Authority meeting. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Here, Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, aye.